Amen. Good evening, everyone. We are so glad that you came back tonight. If you could please find your seats and stand with me. We have the honor and the privilege of singing to an Almighty God. Let's remind ourselves of that by singing hymn number 23,
(Singing) Worthy of worship, worthy of praise, worthy of honor and glory. Worthy of all our prayers, unto sing, worthy of all the offerings we bring. You are worthy, Father, Creator. You are worthy, Savior, Sustainer. You are worthy, worthy and wonderful, worthy of worship and praise. Worthy of reverence, worthy of fear, worthy of love and devotion, worthy of bowing and bending knees, worthy of all this and that it to thee. You are worthy, Father, Creator. You are worthy, Savior, Sustainer. You are worthy, worthy and wonderful, worthy of worship and praise. Almighty Father, Master and Lord, King of kings and Redeemer, Wonderful Cresseler, Comforter, Savior and Source of our life without end. We are worthy, Father, Creator. You are worthy, Savior, Sustainer. You are worthy, worthy and wonderful, worthy of worship and praise.
Amen. Great start tonight. The next song will continue on in that same spirit with hymn number 28, "How Great Thou Art." Amen. Sing it out now on the first.
(Singing) O Lord, thy God, when I hear of some wonder, consider all the worlds I've entered in. I see the stars, I hear the rolling thunder, thy might throughout the universe display. And sings thy soul, thy Savior, God to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art. And sings thy soul, thy Savior, God to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art. When through the woods and forest plains I wander, and hear the birds sing sweetly in the trees. When I look down from a mountain, I wonder, and hear the groan and feel a gentle breeze. And sings thy soul, thy Savior, God to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art. And sings thy soul, thy Savior, God to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art. And when I think that God is sudden staring, send him to die, I scarce can't take it in. And on the cross, I'm wearing gladly bearing. He bled thine to take away my sin and woe. And sings thy soul, thy Savior, God to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art. And sings thy soul, thy Savior, God to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art. When Christ shall come with shout of acclamation and take me home, what joy shall fill thy heart and mind? Then I shall bow with humble adoration and their proclaim, "My God, how great thou art!" And sings thy soul, thy Savior, God to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art. And sings thy soul, thy Savior, God to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art.
Let's bow our heads in worship and prayer. Father, we just got done singing about all of the great things that you have done. And we're drawn to look at creation and the great mountains or the great valleys. We can see your handiwork in the skies. And it's easy for us to acknowledge your greatness when we look around us. But there is no greater mountain in the world, no greater hill in all of creation for which we can gaze upon your greatness than a little place in a little city that your word calls Mount Calvary. For it was there in your greatness that somehow, some way, and in a way that our minds cannot comprehend, you chose to place all of our sin on your Son. And your word tells us that he became sin. He who knew no sin became sin for us that we might become the righteousness of God. That is so hard for us to understand and imagine, but I know that it is great. The animal kingdom is impressive. But the mercy that you have shed on a race that has consistently rejected and abandoned you, that is where the true greatness of God is seen. And so we worship you for your great love wherewith you loved us. Lord, we have been studying your Son these past few days. And we're grateful for Brother McCracken being sensitive to your leading and preparing to teach us about the mind of Christ. And it is indeed great and help us tonight as we sit again beneath the teaching and preaching of your word to grasp and to comprehend as best as possible the greatness of the mind of Jesus Christ. Impress upon us the need to surrender to you so that we can experience the mind of Christ in our lives. I think the way your word says it, "Let, let this mind be in you which was in Christ Jesus." So give us, Lord, that understanding of what it looks like to surrender to the mind of Christ and let that mind be in us. Prepare our hearts for these coming moments, we ask. We also pray, Lord, as we are worshiping and listening to you tonight, a young lady many miles south of here is not thinking at all about the services as she's preparing to bring in her first child into this world. And we ask that you'd give Hannah the strength that she needs. We ask that you protect her and her child. We ask that you would usher this baby into the world safely and begin to prepare both Hannah and Brandon with the wisdom and the skills that they need to raise this child for your glory and for its good. So, Father, we ask that you would minister to them while you minister to us. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. You may be seated. So, so good to see all of you back tonight. Thank you for coming to our final night of the meetings. I appreciate your faithfulness to the services, your encouragement to one another to be here and trust that God will bless you for it. As I mentioned in prayer, do pray for Hannah tonight, Hannah Galman, as she went into labor, I believe, yesterday. So it's been quite a while now. And as of 5:00 to 7:00, she was still, I think the words of her husband were, "She's still fighting." So do pray for her as she's fighting through all the pain. And you mothers understand what she's going through. And we'll keep you posted as soon as we get any information about how things are going there. All right, Lloyd, wherever you're hanging out, if you'd come forward.
My Jesus, fair, was pierced by thorns, by thorns grown from the fall. Thus he who gave the curse was torn to end that curse for all. Oh, love divine, oh, matchless grace, that God should die for men with joyful grief. I lift my praise, upholding all my sin, adoring only him. My Jesus, kind, was torn by nails, by nails of cruel men. And to his cross, as grace prevailed, God pinned my wretched sin. Oh, love divine, oh, matchless grace, that God should die for men with joyful grief. I lift my praise, upholding all my sin, adoring only him. My Jesus, pure, was crushed by God, by God in judgment just. The Father grieved yet turned his rod on Christ, made sin for us. My Jesus, strong, shall come to reign, to who reign in majesty. The lamb arose and death is slain. Lord, come in victory. Oh, love divine, oh, matchless grace, that God should die for- that God should die for men. With joyful grief I lift my praise, uppouring all my sin, adoring only him.
Thank you, Lloyd. We're gonna learn that, I believe, Sunday night with Lloyd's help, and Jeff's gonna lead us. It's a new song we're gonna introduce. As you could hear, the words are precious, precious words. We're gonna get right into the preaching here in just a moment. It's been a long weekend and a long short week. A lot of you can't quite figure out if today's Wednesday or not. If you're like me, Monday was Wednesday, Tuesday was Wednesday. And so you're probably more tired than usual. But I trust, again, God will bless you for your time in His house. We're going to sing as we did last night, and then we're going to take a break. And we'll have some time of personal confession and preparation. And then we'll sing the chorus again. And we are singing, we are asking the Spirit of God to work in each of our hearts. And so we'll sing this together. And then orchestra, stay put. Pastor Seaton, come forward. Give us that time of silence. And then we'll sing a cappella. And we'll sing it from our hearts, expecting the Holy Spirit to work in our lives. So let's all stand, and we'll sing "Spirit of a Living God." Oh, God, our God, how majestic is your name in all this earth. God, you are so great. God, you are so merciful. You are so righteous, so holy, so just, so faithful. God, we are nothing like you. God, I can't imagine what you look down and see when you see the things that we do. But God, I'm grateful that when you look on us, you see the blood of your Son, Jesus Christ. God, you don't see the things that we have done in the past. You don't see our sins. But God, you see us as being redeemed because of the blood of your Son. And we thank you for that tonight. God, we're grateful for these meetings. We're grateful for the opportunity that we've had to be in church these last four days. And, God, it's been good. And, Lord, we pray that as we meet again tonight to worship you, God, that our attitudes and our approach would be pleasing in your sight. And, God, we do ask and plead, God, we beseech you that your Holy Spirit would fall fresh on each of us tonight. We ask that your Holy Spirit would fall fresh on Brother McCracken. And, God, the things that have been prepared, the things that he is ready to preach, God, that you would allow him the liberty to preach with boldness and with power. And, Father, we ask that your Holy Spirit would move in our midst. We ask your Holy Spirit to move in our hearts and in our minds, Lord, in such a great way that we would leave here so changed. And, God, if there's anybody here tonight that has never accepted your Son as their personal Savior, God, we pray that tonight might be that night. We pray that there be clarity of the gospel presented. We pray that your Spirit would move and convict. Lord, we pray that you would do a great work. Again, we thank you for the time to be here tonight. We pray that you bless our service, each moment of it. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Like last night, I would invite you to extend this song into a personal prayer.
Spirit of the living God, fall fresh on me. Spirit of the living God, fall fresh on me. Melt me, mold me, fill me, use me. Spirit of the living God, fall fresh on me.
Can you hear me see it?
Bless the Lord. Thank you. Thank you very much, Brother Jeff and Pastor Cable, for preparation and congregational singing, the music, and helping us realize who we're with and who we're in front of. And that's our great Savior and our great God and His kind Holy Spirit that spends time and lives in us. It's a hallelujah. So I do, before I keep going, I just want to say thank you to Pastor Cable. When I met him some years ago, I think I got to speak to him in California when he came out to the conference. Anyway, then we're trying to work out how I was gonna do that. And I was glad that there's an interest. So then I came, and I was here for the one Saturday, I mean, one Sunday. And I think I was just here for the day. I might have been here an extra day. And then we began to work on, okay, this is what we're gonna try to do. Try to do Kingsman Conference, and then you'd stay and preach. And it's hard to believe this is the fifth one. And I'm very, very thankful that God allowed Pastor Cable and Ms. Tara to become part of our life. It's wonderful. Some people, they just become your friends, and they're just part of you, part of your life. I'm grateful for it. And I'm so grateful to have privilege, opportunity to get to spend time. Every year we've come, we get to at least have a meal with Pastor Nugent and his wife. And we get to fellowship and enjoy their company. Right now, I'm in the midst of a book about sailors and their captain and his power and his authority and his love for the people. And I just see Pastor Nugent says, "He's the captain." And that's what God's done for him and with him. And then I mentioned to him, I don't remember what service it was, but I said, "I know when you come here that you are blessed to see what God continues to do with the work that he did with you and in you and these folks." And he's just blessed, and I'm grateful for that. And your kindness to us, I may have mentioned this before, there's a church in Oregon that treats me in some category that I'm somebody important and that I am one of their, one of the preachers that is a national preacher, whatever, like I'm somebody. And they truly make us feel that way. And God allows us to go there every year. We've been going there for 27 years, 26 years. And I just can't imagine how they treat, I know they don't treat other, I think they do treat other evangelists like me, but I don't know it, and it's okay. Because I think I'm special. But you folks do this very, very same thing. I'm humbled by it. I'm super grateful for it. And what God has done in my life for these five years is that he's let me understand that Calvary Heights Baptist Church is good for me. And I'm grateful that I get to be part of it. And so I'm very thankful. So I'm looking forward to what we're gonna do tonight. And by God's grace, we get to do it again next year. And Pastor said he's asked me every year that would I preach what we consider our testimony and all the things that we've been through? And he says he's asked me every year, but this is the first year that I heard it. And so by God's grace, next year, that will be a plan of mine that one of the services, and just try to get leadership, but that I would preach concerning all the events that have happened in our life and what God does in those events and what the purpose of those are. And it's extraordinary. I would never believe. The night we got married, her brother is quite a good singer, and he sang in our wedding. Our wedding song was "Whatever It Takes" for my will to break. And we never dreamed what all God would do. But the truth is, he's not stopped working on us. And we give him glory for that. So by God's grace, I think I'll remember this time he asked me to do that. Anyway, I'm looking forward to tonight. Philippians chapter two, please. Philippians chapter two. Also, I don't know how to say other than say thank you for all the preparation for music. I do so much appreciate the instruments playing and then the work that Brother Jeff does and the musicians. It's precious. And then all the work that takes place in nurseries and all the back stuff. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. And friends and guests that came, and you came back again, or you're here tonight, thank you. It's so precious when we invite people. We invite people all the time, and most of the time they go, "Yeah, yeah, I'll think about that. I'll try to do that." And they don't come. But some of you have come, and it's just been awesome. It's been a blessing. So thank you for being here. Philippians chapter two. If you're able, I'd ask you again to stand. "We stand to give reverence and honor to the eternal, infallible, inerrant, perfect, preserved word of the living God." Philippians two. Let's enjoy the passage again. I believe, personally, I believe repetition's the best teacher. "If there be therefore any consolation in Christ, if any comfort of love, if any fellowship of the Spirit, if any bows and mercies, fulfill ye my joy, that ye be like-minded, having the same love, being of one accord, of one mind. Let nothing be done through strife or vain glory; but in lowliness of mind, let each esteem other better than themselves. Look not every man on his own things, but every man also on the things of others. Let this mind be in you, which was also in Christ Jesus, who, being in the form of God, thought it not robbery to be equalled with God, but made himself of no reputation, and took upon him the form of a servant, and was made in the likeness of men. Being found in fashion as a man, he humbled himself, became obedient unto death, even the death of the cross. Wherefore God also hath highly exalted him, and given him a name which is above every name, that at the name of Jesus every knee should bow, of things in heaven, of things in earth, of things under the earth, and that every tongue should confess that Jesus Christ is Lord to the glory of the Father. Wherefore, my beloved, as ye have always obeyed, not as in my presence only, but now much more in my absence, work out your own salvation with fear and trembling." We'll stop right there, and we'll have prayer. Again, I just want to ask God for His help. I don't want to pray just because, we always pray rather than we read. I truly, truly would not for God to be glorified. Let's pray. Our great God, I sure love you. Thank you. Thank you for the joy and the privilege it's mine to just be a preacher of your word. And then you allow me to go from place to place and try my utmost to preach truth and teach truth. And, God, see you touch lives and change lives. Thank you. I pray that tonight would be another night that you speak to us, that our response to you would say yes to whatever it is, and we would enjoy how much you love us and all you've done for us. I pray for those that might not be saved. Thank you that you're giving them this moment. I pray that you and your great kindness, mercy, and grace, that their heart would know that you want to forgive them and that they would yield and say yes to you. We sure love you, Jesus, and can't wait to see you. We pray these things in your mighty and holy name. Amen. Amen. You may be seated. Let me just do two, I think they're two quick things. When it says that Jesus made himself of no reputation, I didn't touch on that. I'm not going to end the message. It's not written there. But this, when I was reading, reminded me that for the first time in my study in the last few weeks, I never thought about it. I always said he made himself of no reputation. And I talk about how we care about our reputation and what people think and all that. Well, he made himself of no reputation. But one of the fellows that I was working after, he pointed out something that he made himself of no reputation. He made himself nothing. That's remarkable. Became nothing for us. The second thing I wanted to point out is that verses nine, God highly exalted him, every knee and every tongue and so on. I'm not gonna touch on that tonight either. It's so wonderful. It's powerful. And we're not going ahead there. But I am excited about all the book of Philippians. It's awesome. And so thank the Lord for it. So here we go. And these verses, especially verses five, six, seven, eight, those verses show us the amazing obedience of our Savior and his selfless humility. So I'll read again. "He left the glories of heaven to take on inglorious humanity, and live and suffer, and live amid suffering and sin and death. He veiled him the brilliance of his divine attributes, and willingly accepted the limitations of human life. He gave up the adoration and praise of heaven to become the victim of torture, and ultimately the excruciating death on the cross. He did all this in perfect obedience, not one flaw, not one inconsistency, not one impatient word, not one misstep or stray thought contrary to the Father's will." When we are admonished in verse five to let this mind be in you, I think the first response and honest admission is, "That's impossible." There have been a lot of half-hearted people try to follow Jesus' example by faking it, hoping to please others or get some attention. There are those who are Christ followers, but they have put on an outward show while everybody's watching. They wipe off the made-up virtues when they're back at home in their bedroom or out in the garage or at work, where nobody actually sees what they were pretending to be. Some people focus on the image rather than the substance. They focus on doing. Make sure we do all the, rather than being. Make sure we do all the, rather than being. It's also true, people do attempt to live obediently, because they think God is some kind of cosmic vending machine. Yeah, yeah. You can pay with good deeds and receive what you want in return. That's almost, it's funny, but it's almost embarrassing how many of us kind of act like that. That, "Well, I've been doing good for six months. Come on. When is the, when is it coming? When am I going to get all this stuff?" It's a shame that us that say we know the Bible, that we would treat God as if he owes us something. None of these attempts to follow Christ's example, Philippians 2, is what Paul had in mind. He wanted us to have something totally different. He's presenting a new attitude of life headed in the direction of perfect obedience of Christ. It's called the Christ life. That's what he wants for us. This life is completely dependent upon the inner work of the Holy Spirit to lead us in that journey. Just because I'm saying that, I just want to act like that you're with me, and I know the preachers talked to me about how you guys are all thinkers, but I still want you to respond that, I want you to say, "Amen." I want to finish the sentence. It's completely dependent on the inner work of the Holy Spirit to lead us in that journey. Thank you. That's very sweet. I told you, you were sweet. So I don't tell people the titles of my sermons, because I don't actually know what they are myself. When I get done with them, I write a title up there, so I can log them in my files. But I do have one that I call, "How is the impossible possible?" And then, what I told you last night, I also have a subtitle called, "Seeing Behind the Panel." Genuine Christlikeness means that we embody and we express, over here is where I usually do this, where we embody and we express the life of Christ. It's called the Christ life. The only way possible for any human to embody the life of Christ is they must, they must have a supernatural experience, a supernatural birth. If we're going to experience the Christ life, and going to live as He lived, first of all, ye must be born again. It's got to start there. Why? Well, briefly, because Adam and Eve are sent, because of Adam and Eve, all humans are born sinners. We are all born dead spiritually. We have body, soul, and dead spirit. But the possibility is when we are dead in sins, He hath quickened us together in Christ. That's what's called born again. John 6:63, he says that the spirit that quickeneth, the new birth, is the work of the Holy Spirit. Upon the new birth, the Bible says, in 1 Corinthians, it says that, "Ye are the temple of God, and the Spirit of God dwelleth in you." Amen? Absolutely. Because God lives in us, this is how we have the ability to have a humbled, selfless humility and obedience like Christ. Now that we understand that God lives in us, in Philippians, let's look at chapter 1. I want to show you something that Paul says in chapter 1, in verse 6. He says, "Being confident of this very thing, that he which hath begun a good work in you will perform it until the day of Jesus Christ." Let's just pause and look up here. "That he that hath begun a good work in you." I wonder who that was that began to do a good work in us? Do you understand that that's Jesus Christ? It's, you could even say that's God. It's the Holy Spirit. At the moment of salvation, He has begun the good work in us, and then, I'm just reading what it says, "He began the work," and then it says, "in you will perform it." That's what the Bible says. It doesn't say, "Well, He's going to work real hard to perform it. It's going to be difficult, but He's not going to give up." It says, "He will perform it." Look at verse 10. "That ye may approve things that are excellent." Paul's talking to the Philippians. "That ye may be sincere without offense till the day of Christ," till Christ comes back. Watch what he says now. "Being filled with the fruits of righteousness, which are by Jesus Christ, unto the glory and praise of God." Paul says, "He's begun a good work in you. He's going to perform it, and He's going to, until He comes back, He will perform it." And then he says at the end, here, verse 11, "that we're filled with the fruits of righteousness." I love this, when the study of this and the work of this, when I look at the word "filled," do you know, maybe, anyway, have you ever filled up a glass, and it's just a round glass, but it makes a little curve at the top, and it's round there? It's really full to the brim. That's what the word is here, that we are filled, filled to the brim. And I love the other word that the dictionary writer wrote, whatever you call him, the scholar, but anyways, it's called saturated. We're going to be saturated, filled to the brim, and then it says, "with fruits of righteousness." You know what fruits are? If I have fruits of righteousness, that means that the fruit is an outward expression, or you say it like this, it's an outward evidence that there's life inside me. He's the vine, I'm just the branch. If there's any fruit, that is evidence that I am connected to the life. Hallelujah. Then it says righteousness, the fruits of righteousness. What is righteousness? Well, easily, righteousness is right standing before God. I have, I got these fruits of righteousness, and I got right standing before God. The fruits of righteousness, the fruits of righteousness, because I have right standing before God, these fruits are all coming from the righteousness of God. Or another word, a twin, or maybe even Siamese twin, is that righteousness and holiness. So the holiness of God are these fruits. And I don't know if you're catching this or not, but look at the end of the verse 13, I mean, verse 11, it says, "which are by Jesus Christ." Did you just hear it? It has nothing to do with Dave. I don't have to be going, "Ah, I'm trying to get the fruits of righteousness. Ah, I'm trying to work real hard. I'm trying my best. Ah." Oh, they come by Jesus Christ. I love it. I thought this was at least something to pay attention to in the passage, where it says at the end of verse 11, "unto the glory and praise of God." I don't know if you were remembering or not, but everything Christ did was for others. It wasn't about Him. This fruit, fruits of righteousness that I have, an opportunity to be filled with these fruits and this, wow. It's not, Jesus saying, it's not to bring me glory, it brings glory to the Father. When you think of the fruits of righteousness, I guess I'll just say them again tonight, like I did last night. The fruits of righteousness, the only way I could ever have any of those, I don't have any righteousness of my own. So the verse 11 says, "which are by Jesus Christ." I don't have any. And so these fruits of righteousness would have to be, it would have to include the mind of Christ. Fruit of holiness. And I don't think it would be wrong at all to say, well, it would at least include nine of the fruit of the Spirit. That would be fruit of righteousness, amen? So the nine fruit of the Spirit should be coming from this branch that's connected to the vine, that he says, in the text here, he says that you are filled, saturated, and because of that, you have fruits of righteousness. Some of you don't like it like this, do you? I'm going to change it, okay? Just for you. Okay? There's nine fruit. And I've got them listed. You know them, or some of you know them, but all of these things should be part of our life. It's not by us, it's by Jesus. The only way we have ability to have the mind of Christ is because of Him, not us. The realization of our dichotomy, whoa. I'm impressing myself. Our dichotomy, now that we're born again, we have the natural and the spiritual. We have the fleshly and the spiritual. We have Mr. Carnie and the spiritual, amen? We must recognize that our natural condition and the supernatural are different. The natural condition, the Christ-like obedience, is impossible. I guess I should say it again. In the natural condition, Christ-like obedience is impossible. In our flesh, our natural man receiveth not the things of God. It's impossible for us to please Him in the flesh. "In my flesh dwelleth no good thing." Romans 8:17. But because I have the supernatural, the spiritual, it enables us to have Christlikeness, not because of us, only because of Him. Praise His name. Now look at chapter 2 of Philippians, verse number 12. "Wherefore, my beloved..." Let's just pause for a moment. See where he said, "wherefore"? Why him say that? "wherefore." Some of you already know, and anyway, you're very well aware, when the Bible says "therefore," it's always referring to something that was set in front of there. Well, because of this, "therefore." Well, "wherefore" is the cousin to "therefore." When you see "wherefore," you need to find out what is, why, why for it's "therefore." "wherefore." And so it's the same thing, all he's saying, he says, "Hey, well for, wherefore," he's saying, okay, because of what I've said in chapter 1, and chapter 2, and the first 11 verses, he says, "Hey, wherefore, my beloved, as you have always obeyed, not as in my presence only, but now much more in my absence." So he's bringing out, because verse 12 links itself to the humbled, surrendered obedience of Christ, because of that, we too, "wherefore," we too should be, our effort should be, that we too have the mind of Christ, that we have the Christ life. That's what he's getting across. He's saying, we Philippians, you Philippians, are we here tonight, that we are to have this kind of obedience, the same kind of obedience that Christ had? So he says, "the word, wherefore, my beloved, as you have always obeyed." Then he goes like this, "not in my presence only, but now much more in my absence." He said, "When I was with you, it was awesome. I loved how you guys obeyed, and you tried to get in line and do all the..." And then he says, "I'm gone, you're still doing the same thing." It's a blessing. Then the end of verse 12 is a bummer, or it could be troubling. He says, "obeyed." He says, "Now work out your own salvation with fear and trembling." Man, oh, man, if you just read that, and that context, and just read it right there, you don't have any more to read, you go, "Oh, man. I've been trying to do good." He just said, "I've been obeyed while he was here, and I've been obeyed while he was gone. I've been trying to have the mind of Christ, be Christ-like." And then he says, "Now work out your own salvation with fear and trembling. I'm scared to death. I might not live good enough to make it. I want to be saved. I want to go to heaven. I'm going to work." This is going to be hard. If he went straight from verse 12, and he went straight to verse 14, look what the imagination would say. Verse 14. "Do all things without murmuring and disputings." Do you know, if Paul went straight from verse 12, where he says, "work out your own salvation," then he says, "do all things without murmuring and disputings," you're going, "Okay, I'm going to try it real hard. This is one of the things we got to do, guys. But this is going to be, it's scary. We got to try really hard not to have any murmuring. No, no, we don't want any of that. We got to hang in there." So we might get the impression, okay, God did His part, now I got to do my part. Got to work hard at imitating Christ and His mind, try our best to be like Jesus. Ladies and gentlemen, let me just, you already know it, and I'm getting ready to say it anyway, and I want to say it. This is not what Paul is saying. Hallelujah. These Philippians are already authentic. They're already born again. He already said that he's begun a good work in you. They're already born again. He's not saying you need to work, and so you're going to be saved. The idea of working out their salvation is not suggesting that they are to work for their salvation. So what is he saying? What's he urging us to do? That we're to work out our salvation. Watch this. Let your salvation show up in your life. It ought to work out of you. People, "Way, I got to get out of the way. I got some stuff coming out of there." The way you live, and your behavior, and all your actions, and your activity, it should come across, well, I'll just say it out loud, it ought to come across like Christ. Salvation, working out your salvation, salvation is by Jesus Christ. Living the Christian life is by Jesus Christ. And so if I'm living the Christian life by Jesus Christ, it makes sense that it's going to show up in my life. Why does he say with fear and trembling? I don't have any commentaries behind me, and a bunch of pastors behind me telling me, "Dave, tell them this." But I'm going to tell you what I know that the Bible means with fear and trembling. Because, because we are so human, that our flesh takes over so easily. Pay attention with fear and trembling. Don't act like it's no big deal. It is a big deal. It's a great big deal. If I'm supposed to have the life of Christ, and I have the life of Dave, that ought to scare me half to death. God, I don't want to live over here. I want people to see Christ, see Christ, not Dave. We must recognize our inability to practice this kind of Christ-like obedience on our own. Since I wrote the words, I'm going to read them to you. This is paramount. This is most important. So I'm going to read it again. "We must recognize our inability to practice this kind of Christ-like obedience on our own. If you don't recognize it, you will continue to flounder in your walk with Christ, one day doing pretty good and failing miserably the next." Paul is explaining to the Filipinos, the Philippians, to us, how Christian obedience actually works. It's almost, it's almost like Paul removes the access panel from Christianity, and he's opening up the cover, and he's showing us how the Christian life actually works. how the Christian life actually works. If you and I, I think, believe Paul, I believe God's word is trying to give us an inner glimpse of how this mind of Christ thing can work, how this Christ-life can actually work. God is opening this up for us, so He can show us, so we can see what, how, and who's doing the work. Look at verse 13, honey, please look at verse 13. "For it is God which worketh in you, both to will and to do of His good pleasure." Did you just hear it? We're only able to work out our salvation in real obedience because God Almighty is the one that's doing it. "It's God which worketh in you, both to will..." What does that mean, "to will"? That we will have a desire to do it. Stop, let's just stop. I've been in church my entire life, I've been preaching now for like, like a 120 years, a long time. Here's what I've learned. Many of us that are attending church, and go faithfully, might even go like each night to a revival. That we somehow think that we've gotta check all the little boxes, so we can be sure we're good Christians. And so since I'm talking about it, some of you already know that your desire to love Him, your desire to love His Word, your desire to love the anthems, your desire to love praying, your desire to love one another in the body, you know your desires. You know that it's not big. You've got all kinds of desires that are bigger than those desires. Sorry, I'm just saying, that's just how as humans are. But this says, "It is God that worketh in you, both to will, to do the desire." It's God, it's not, you can't pump it up and say, "I gotta get the desire, I gotta work on this hard. I wanna be more dedicated, yeah." You can't do it. It's His indwelling spirit. Remember verse, just remember, you don't have to look there, but chapter one, verse 11, it says, "We are filled with the fruits of righteousness, which are by Jesus Christ." He's the one that filled us up, saturated us with the fruits of righteousness. As we surrender, as we submit to the working of His Spirit, He will give us both the desire, the will, and to do. To do means we have the ability to do. It's like the power to do it, to accomplish His will. He does this invisible work in us by His amazing grace. When you open the panel up, perhaps if there was a light blinking up there that said, "Amazing grace." That's what you would see if we looked at it like that. Listen to the words in the book of James, listen to it. "He giveth more grace; wherefore God resisteth the proud, but giveth grace unto the humble." I don't know if anybody can remember all those words or not. Humbled, selfless obedience? If we will humble ourself, He will give us His grace. Grace is received by humbled, surrendered obedience. If you humble yourself, and you don't surrender, it's not coming. If you humble yourself, and you surrender, but you're not gonna be willing to do, to obey, it's no good. Grace, what does it mean? I love that we, as Baptist, one of our favorite definitions of grace is "unmerited favor." I love that. What does that mean? I think it means unmerited favor. You don't deserve it. You can't work for it. You can't do enough activity for the favor, for the blessing. I do love, someone made the acrostic with "grace, God's riches at Christ's expense." We get all of God's riches, and Christ paid for it all, that's grace. Preacher down in Georgia, I heard preach years ago, his way, that he loved to define grace. He said, "Grace, grace is everything for nothing. Everything for nothing." And it's pretty true. The air we're breathing is God's grace. The heart that's pushing blood through our bodies is God's grace. The ability to sit up right, and have consciousness and awareness, and have function of the brain and heart to make decisions is God's grace. Everything for nothing. I'm just gonna remind you, I so badly wanted to turn there, but I'm already gonna preach longer than I was going to, so... Anyway, just please believe me and catch the truth of, Paul gives personal testimony of grace. It's significant, and it's even a beautiful definition. In 2 Corinthians 12, Paul prays three times for the thorn that he's been given to be removed, the thorn in the flesh. God answers, "No." But God also gives, "My grace is sufficient for thee. For my strength, Christ, my strength, is made perfect in weakness." Not your strength, Christ's strength is made perfect in weakness. So when Paul begs God three times, and three times, God says, "No." And it's in red letters, in my red-lettered Bible, that says, "My grace is sufficient for thee. For my strength is made perfect in weakness." Paul's heart shifts. Instead of resenting the thorn, Paul says, "Most gladly. Therefore, will I rather glory in my infirmities, that the power of Christ may rest upon me." Do you see how his mind, that he shifted in his attitude, in his heart? This is how grace works. God changed Paul's desire. He wanted it gone, and now he says, "No, no, most gladly, therefore. I receive this, I accept this." His perspective changes. Now he desires God's will. He wants God's will, even if it means weakness, rather than having his own will. Oh, I wish we believed that. Paul did that, and if we want God's grace, if we want God, that he, that he, that he, both to will and to do, if we want the desire to serve God, God is the one that will give us that desire, and He might go through some uncomfortable things. It doesn't have to. But God used one of the greatest people of the New Testament, and God says, "No, no, no." And He goes, "God says, 'My grace is sufficient,'" and Paul's whole desire changed. "I most gladly, therefore." Paul testifies that God not only gives him the desire, God gives him the power to do. Paul testifies this, he says, "I now have the power to do. Therefore," listen what he says, "Therefore, I take pleasure in infirmities, in reproaches, in necessities, in persecutions, in distresses, for Christ's sake. For when I am weak, then I am strong." Paul says, "When I am weak," and Jesus says, "My strength is made perfect in weakness." When Paul said, "When I am weak, I'm strong," what, how did he get the strength? Well, it's not his, it's Christ. That's grace defined in Paul's life. That he got the desire to accept whatever's in his life, and then God gave him the power to live through these things. He tells them, he calls them infirmities, reproaches, necessities, persecutions, distresses. We get bent out of shape if we have a flat tire, or lose a crown, get a rash. God forgive us. Grace didn't remove the thorn, but God gave him the power to do what God has called him to do in spite of the thorn. This is the living illustration of verse 13, chapter two. "For it is God which worketh in you, both to will and to do His good pleasure." We simply do what God's commanded. I'm gonna read this, I didn't write it, I wish I did, it's so wonderful. If we could see, if we could really open up the panel, and we could see the work of Christ in us, if God would allow us to see it, one fellow said it like this, "It would take our breath away." Because God is the only one at work. God is the one empowering us to do the impossible. It's not our spirit that somehow self-motivates us and perpetuates obedience. No, 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 it's the Spirit of Christ that works in us to make us into the people He wants us to be. It's our job to have a humbled, surrendered obedience by faith. Then He can do His work, as long as we're stiff-necked, and hard-headed, and stubborn, and we will not surrender, then we don't get His grace. And His grace gives us the desire and the ability to do what He wants us to do. Try to go through this quickly, back in Philippians 2, verse 14 through 16. Paul provides a detailed picture of what the inner works looks like. Verse 14, he said, "We are to do all things without murmuring and disputing." Ladies and gentlemen, if we are living the Christ-life, it just will show up. The murmuring and disputing has quit, it's gone, it's not part of our life. Oh, mercy. When we come to the house of God, it should be the murmuring, the contention, the aggravation, it's gone. We're in the house of God, but honey, it should not just be here. It should be when you walk in the door of your house, that your wife is waiting for you, or she, you come in, and there is no murmuring, there's no disputing, there's not the contention. Why? Not because of you, bubba, but because of Christ is working in you, the power to do, and the desire to do His will. Girls, when he walks in, how do you behave toward him? Kids, when your dad comes home, or when you walk in the house, it's all about you, isn't it? That's not Christianity. That's not what the mind of Christ is, that's not what the spirit-controlled life is. Verse 15 shows up that we are blameless and harmless, above reproach. Continues, "Without rebuke, in the midst of a crooked and perverse generation." I'm not gonna take time to define blameless and harmless and so on, but that's just what Christianity's supposed to be like. Not just at church, it's supposed to be at your job too. I love the picture when he says, "Without rebuke, in the midst of a crooked and perverse nation." What does that mean? I love this picture, we are unbending pillars in a crooked culture. Will you stand strong for Jesus? And then I'll say, "Sorry, you can't do it." But will you let Jesus stand strong in you? Just surrender to it? It says, "Among whom ye lights shine in the world." Will we shine like brilliant lights in a dark world? God's goal for us is not that we retreat from the world and hide somewhere in a monastery. He doesn't want us to blend into the world where our witness falls apart. We're holding forth the Word of life. Don't let anything slip from God's Word. When we live like this, here's what I wrote in my notes, it says, "What?" It's like we have the mind of Christ. When these things start being in my life, how do they happen? Only by His grace. How do we get His grace? Humbled, surrendered obedience by faith. Just, I'm almost done. We're shining for Christ, for all to see. Remember, our Savior said, "You are the light of the world. Let your light so shine before men, that they may see your good works and glorify your Father, which is in heaven." Let me just, what we've been talking about, just catch this truth. Truth is, the only light we have is His light. We're not that light, it's not our light, He's the light. The only good works we have are His. We don't have any good works. The only way the world will see His light is by Him and because of Him. This is the Christ-life we are to live. I think it could be life rearranging. I think it'd be a church culture that shifts, that it's not about us. It's all about Jesus. What's this, when it's about Jesus, I'm really Christ-like? I think we went over this quite a bit, that I'm everybody's servant, and everybody's better than me. Let me read you this short few sentences by an old preacher. He said, "Christians who live with an attitude of joy rather than grumbling, and whose pure lives shine like lights in the world, will be the talk of the town. They'll transform the morale at the office. They'll become agents of change at school. And if the church as a whole focused on fueling the lights of joyful Christ-likeness, imagine what that could do for our nation, even our world. My goal is not for the nation to know my name, or the world to know my name, but I want Christ to be satisfied that I'm His servant, and that I've yielded to Him, and realized that when I look inside, Christianity, it's not Dave doing all the work. He doesn't have the ability to do any of it. God is at work in us. We must surrender to it by faith. Friend, if you're not yet born again, if you're not saved, I got such good news for you. Jesus is still saving people. You say, "How do you know that?" "'Cause He hadn't come back yet." He's coming back, and then it'd be too late. But He's still giving you opportunity. I just can't imagine what it would be like to be in hell, because in hell, you have a memory, and all the times you heard truth, you heard the gospel, you heard that Jesus is the only way, and you kept thinking, "I thought I was pretty good, I thought I've made it." And then you're really, truly not forgiven. If you're not sure, please, don't carry that baggage around. Settle it, trust Christ and Him only. Brother Dave, I'm saved, I'm saved. Let's surrender. We don't have anything we can offer, except just surrender. I ask you to stand. Thank you, thank you for listening. I'd like to pray with you, our great God, I come to you again, thank you, thank you for the Bible. Thank you for the truth. Thank you for the reality, Jesus, that it's God that worketh in us, both to do and to will Your good pleasure. Thank you. I pray that we would learn to surrender to that. And I understand, I know, we have to do it again, and again, and again, and again, and again. God, thank you for the access to do it again, and we confess our sins, You're faithful and just, to forgive us. We can surrender to You again, Jesus. So I don't even know how it all works, but I know that Your Bible says that You're gonna, to will and to do Your good pleasure, as I surrender to You. Thank you, God. Thank you, God. I pray you'll have your way right now. Our heads are bowed, and music's gonna begin. I just invite you to respond to God, His goodness, His kindness, His mercy, His grace. Oh, what a Savior. God knows if you have truly surrendered, not just your sins, but your will to Him. He knows. And He knows that you gotta do it again, and again, and again. Let's be sensitive and honest with Him tonight.
We're gonna conclude the special meetings with a familiar song, "Take My Life and Let It Be." There are four verses of very meaningful words that are meant to be sung to God. And if you're gonna sing them, and I wish you would, you really need to mean what you're saying, God hears these words. These are meant to be a surrendering type of song. So let's sing these words meaningfully.
Take my life and let it be, consecrated for to thee. Take my hands and let them move, at the impulse of thy love, at the impulse of thy love. Take my feet and let them be, swift and beautiful for thee. Take my voice and let me sing, always only for my King, always only for my King. Take my silver and thy gold, not a rite for thy reward. Take my moments and my days, let them flow in ceaseless praise, let them flow in ceaseless praise. Take my will and may it bind, it shall be no longer mine. Take my heart, it is thy own, it shall be thy royal throne, it shall be thy royal throne.
If you weren't with us last year, Brother McCracken taught a real powerful series on the spirit-filled life, this was a great follow-up to that. And anyway, someone came up to me after the special meetings and the series last year, and said, "Pastor, it sounds like any problem we're having boils back to this issue. And therefore, whatever our problem is, the solution is the same. We're just supposed to surrender to the Spirit of God." And I said, "Yeah." And I gotta figure out how to preach 52 Sundays and 52 Wednesdays to tell you the same thing over and over, and that is the answer to all of our problems. It's not trying harder, it's not doing better, it's about surrender. So whatever your issue is, and by the way, it's not unique to you, the world is full of billions of people who have the same problems. Whatever your issue is, whatever my issue is, the solution is the same. It's surrendering to God and letting Him do the work, give us the victory, produce the righteousness, all of that stuff. So if you're frustrated tonight, I hope the special meetings have given you some light, some solutions, some answers. It's not about you getting victory, it's about letting God give you the victory. Remember that, whatever happens tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon, it's not, "I gotta try harder," it's, "I'm trying too hard, I've gotta just surrender." Would you thank Brother McCracken and Sister McCracken for giving us four and five wonderful days together? Would you thank them? Do be in prayer for the McCrackens, they preach all the time. I say "they" because Nancy writes the sermons, Brother McCracken says them, preaches them. But they're only home, oh, they told me, I think, 60 days out of the year, something like that. They're just on the road all the time. And as we sat this afternoon for lunch, Pastor Nugent's, Mrs. Nugent's, the McCrackens, my wife and I, I said, "We look forward to doing this again next year, but we may not get that opportunity. There's a good chance one of us isn't here, that's just how life is." So don't take anything for granted on your way out tonight. Would you spend just a moment, give the McCrackens a handshake, or a hug, or just a smile? Let them know you appreciate them coming. God leads you to take and be a personal investor in their ministry by means of giving them a pocket offering, you do that. But be a blessing to them on your way out with at least a smile and a thank you. And pray for them, please, pray for them. They have such influence, such influence. Ask God to continue to work in their lives. And thank you for being here. Get some rest, come back Sunday with the same level of expectation for God to work in our midst and to speak to your heart, okay? Let's bow and have a final word of prayer. Father, thank you for these four days of special meetings, these five days of services, including Saturday. God, I'm grateful for your word and for the ears to hear it, the eyes to read it, the mind to understand it, the heart to receive it. I'm thankful for the preaching of your word and the man you sent us to preach it. I thank you so much for his wife, who supports him, who stands by him. I thank you that you have used Nancy to make David McCracken the vessel that he's become. And I pray your blessings on them, on their health, on their spirit, on their marriage, on their finances, on their children, and on their grandchildren. I pray that you bless them as they now go to another church in New York, use them there, minister to them. And Father, as we leave tonight, I pray that we would all leave understanding that the key to victory and the key to successful Christian living, it's found only in surrendering to the Spirit of God. And may we never forget that, may we put it into practice starting now. Thank you for Jesus. Thank you for His love, thank you for His example, thank you for His mind, thank you for His presence in each of our lives. May we see, may we hear, may we feel His presence, and may we surrender to it, allowing Him to perfect that which He has started in us. We love you and we ask all these things now in Jesus' name. Amen, God bless you.